And welcome, ladies and gentlemen. A call to order the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners Business Meeting, August 4th, 2016. I'll ask Mr. Crepp, our county administrator, to take the roll.
Good morning, Commissioners. This morning, we are joined with County Council, Stephen Madcor, and also Mary Rathke, our Clerk of the Board. I'll start with the roll. Commissioner Bernard?
Here.
Commissioner Savis?
Here.
Commissioner Schrader?
Here.
Chair Ludlow?
Here. Commissioner Smith's going to come right along here in a couple of moments. Will you please rise and join me in the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And, Mr. Crepp, we have a presentation about some awards that we received.
We do, and as we always do, we have been recognized by the National Association of Counties for many achievements here in Clackamas County. I'm going to ask Tracy Morland with our Public and Governmental Affairs Department to start the presentation.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Tracy Morland, Public and Government Affairs, here today to help recognize the 2016 NACO Achievement Award Program staff. NACO, the National Association of Counties, and Clackamas County is a member of NACO. Achievement awards are given by NACO each year, recognizing innovative county programs across the country that contribute to and enhance county government. This year, Clackamas County has been honored with five, including one Best in Category winner, which we'll talk about a little bit later, but our cable communication staff has created a short video describing the programs in more detail, which we can show very right now.
Clackamas County is a longtime member of the National Association of Counties, or NACO. This year, five Clackamas County programs were honored with NACO Achievement Awards for innovation, results for the community, and efficient use of county resources. The River Health Stewardship Program is a grant program implemented in 2013 by Water Environment Services Watershed Protection Program to help improve the health of Clackamas County Service District One watersheds. Over the past three years, the program has offered opportunities to enhance the health of wildlife habitat with the help of approximately 20,000 volunteers at nearly 300 project sites. Additionally, the program has strengthened Wes's partnership with the participating organizations and inspired new innovative ways of working together to effectively restore natural systems within Clackamas County. In 2015, Clackamas County Commissioners and County Administration approved the formation of a Citizen Academy as a way to inform and engage citizens about the programs and services offered by their local county government. Created by an internal leadership program of county employees, the program met once a month over the last two summers. Residents from all backgrounds and locations participated in sessions on county government, department overviews, and received tours of various county facilities. The Leaders in Sustainability Program helps Clackamas County businesses find operational efficiencies, foster innovation, and reduce environmental impacts. Sustainability advisors offer free assessments of the businesses' current waste, water, and energy use, purchasing practices, and provides recommendations, tools, and ongoing support to help organizations set priorities and be more resource efficient. Local businesses are recognized for their efforts through the Leaders in Sustainability certification process. So far, 29 businesses are Leaders in Sustainability certified, and another 30 are going through the certification process. In November of 2014, Oregon voters legalized the recreational use of marijuana. After legislative changes in 2015, Clackamas County had just six months to identify and adopt marijuana land use regulations before licensing began in January 2016. The project was a challenge with a short timeframe and lots of community interest. The Planning and Zoning Division worked tirelessly with stakeholder groups, the community, and Commissioners to produce regulations that work for Clackamas County and its residents. The county continues to take input on how the regulations could be improved, and planning will review the regulations later this fiscal year. A Safe Place Family Justice Center for Clackamas County opened in December 2013 and is a partnership between public and nonprofit agencies co-located under one roof, providing wraparound services to victims and their children fleeing domestic violence, sexual violence, elder abuse, and stalking. A Safe Place offers a wide range of services that are free of charge. In 2015, 274 protective orders were processed at a Safe Place, and 242 of them were granted by the court. The center had over 3,700 visits for services, a 21% increase from the previous calendar year. Congratulations to the county staff, partners, and volunteers who coordinate these winning and innovative programs for Clackamas County.
All right. Yes, all of those programs are amazing. I wanted to add one more thing about a Safe Place Family Justice Center. Of the more than 30 awards across the country in criminal justice and public safety given out by NACO, a Safe Place received Best in Category honor, and that means that they were judged against other programs in huge jurisdictions and counties, LA County, San Diego, Salt Lake, with millions of people and a lot of resources, but a Safe Place was deemed the best, yielded the best results for our citizens, and was the most innovative. And it's really, it's a big deal. And I know Commissioners Savis and Schrader were able to help accept the award at their NACO conference a couple of weeks ago, but I wanted to mention it again here so we know all the programs are really deserving, but Safe Place received Best in Category.
Excellent. And now, I believe, we're going to have some photo opportunities, and Tracy's going to call each of you up as we come around front and have some pictures taken.
Yes, so the staff who were involved in the Citizen Academy, if you'd come forward. And staff who worked on the marijuana land use regulations?
So we'll invite Mr. Les Poole and Mr. Daniel Beltrami up.
You know, you go right ahead. I'm last.
You're last.
I'm last, and you're Daniel?
Yeah.
Want to go first?
All right, somebody's got to start here.
No worries, no worries. Les Poole, Gladstone, Clackamas County, of course. I want to invite everyone to the fair. I know there might be an announcement today, so I don't want to take away anyone's thunder, but we don't say that I claim this because I have friends in other counties. We have the best county fair.
Absolutely.
Absolutely, we really do. And I think one of the secrets to it is the land. And being someone with a lot of rural land use experience, I'm fascinated by the story of how they bought that property. They paid less money for the land that was cleared because you could farm on it. It didn't have all those nasty trees in the way. And the property that had the trees on it, of course, has still got the trees on it. And being in Canby, it hasn't been overrun by suburbia. Metro hasn't put five-story buildings all the way around it, at least not yet. So let's all get out to the fair. I think it starts the 16th, but wonderful event. Next week, we've got a hearing on the proposed gas tax measure, and I invite folks to get down here and participate. I've really been one that's pushed for us to do something, and those that know me know that I'm not inclined to support tax increases or fee increases, and in this situation, we're really in a fix. I mean, we're in a bind. We've got to do something. I don't know if we can, if six cents will fly. Not, you know, I'm not here to get into a big discussion about this upcoming item, but I would be willing to probably pay a four or five cent gas tax based on all my studies and the folks I've talked to. I realize the city's proposed eight cents, but they don't have any skin in the game. This is a winner for them because it's going to help them and it's going to help the county. And I'll conclude by saying that, you know, I go back to the Selwood Bridge, and the funny little seven-year-old archaic study that was used to say 70% of the people using the Selwood Bridge were from Clackamas County, and we needed to pay a $5 registration fee. Well, it wasn't just $5. And it wasn't so much about the money as the fact that that bridge had been ignored for so long that for years you couldn't take a fire truck or a Tramit bus over it. They allowed that to happen. And those kind of things can't go on in the future. We can't have any more weird diversions into things we can't afford. We just can't. And I just, I just hope that everyone understands that regardless of what your politics are, who you are, that financially, we're, we're in a fragile place in this country. And because we're in a fragile place, we've got to be careful. We've got to think about where we're going to be in five years. And I'm by no means an economist, but I try to track what's going on, and I try to bring a message to, to the county and to the folks that are watching on TV that's bigger than my own little personal experience. You don't hear me talking about my backyard or what Tramit or Metro or anybody else has done to my property. You never hear me talk about some of the things that have occurred and the financial impacts to me because I'm just one person. What you hear me talk about are things that are impacting all of us and that we're all paying for. So I appreciate the time as always, and I look forward to seeing everybody out at our fair. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Beltrami?
Bring it out on my level. Sent you folks a letter. The first part of my letter had to do with some personal things that happened in my area. I'm going to disregard it in this discussion and talk about the last part of my letter, the last paragraph, what I hope you may do. Long time ago, when Oregon became a state, it was pretty much a wild place. People had guns. They had to have guns just to survive. And we were pretty low population density clear up to about 1950. After 1950, a lot of people came into Oregon, and it got more and more populated. In my little area, at Sylvan Drive, there's about nine or 12 new houses that have been built around in that area. This required a clearing of trees and making lots of open spaces. The reason I talk about open spaces is that when we talk about shooting guns in that area, which is the subject that I'm going to talk about, a bullet goes through the air quite nicely. Lots of trees can stop a bullet and not hurt somebody who's on the other side. I'd like to review this plot map that I sent you folks, and maybe you folks have it or not, kind of show you what the situation is in my little area. Open it up here. You folks have that plot map there?
Yes, we do.
Okay. In the center, there's me. Behind me, there's somebody I'll call Shooter Number One. Shooter Number One has been shooting his gun within 20 feet of my property line, 50 feet within my house. If a bullet goes astray, and the last time he was shooting was last week, he was shooting to the west, just to the west, there's a house. If he shoots to the southwest a little bit, there's another house there which could be hit. If he shoots a little bit more to the south or southwest, there's a vacant lot there and lots of trees there. If a bullet did get through that vacant lot and go to the house, it'd hit a property on the other side of Sylvan Drive. If he shoots straight to the north, no big deal, that's me, the bullet will go right straight through my house. A 9-millimeter bullet would probably do it quite nicely. If he shoots to the southeast a little bit, there's a fire chief there, and it would hit his house. If he shoots to the, more to the east and south, Shooter Number Two would probably take that round. And of course, if he shoots to the east, there's people there. Long story short, there's houses all the way around me. Okay? What I'm trying to say is that we need to drive, change some ordinances. We had Officer call me up on this last shooting incident, and he says it's perfectly legal to shoot out in that area. With the extra houses that have been put in the area and the open spaces, it's kind of dangerous. My suggestion is that we need to revise our ordinances. My wish for this board would be for you to pass a resolution to revise shooting practices in Clackamas County. This area that I'm living in is zoned light agricultural. In reality, if you look at the plot map, there's houses all over the place. Heavy caliber guns, 9-millimeters, .356 magnums rifles, which are being discharged by Shooter One and Charter Shooter Two. I think we should really take a look at changing our laws on where to shoot high caliber guns. Questions? Comments?
Well, let's have Mr. Madcor, our County Council, give a real briefing on, like you said, where it's allowed. I think you've probably heard from the sheriff in that regard. Mr. Madcor?
How much time do we have?
Yeah.
The issue about discharge of firearms is pretty much controlled essentially by the state legislature. The county and city authority is relatively limited. If you are within a city and within the urban growth boundary, generally, the discharge is prohibited. If you are out, and cities can regulate in that regard. I take it you're in unincorporated Clackamas County, sir?
I'm out in the country, yeah.
You're not in Sandy City, Limousne?
Oh, no, no. We're eight miles east out toward the fish farm and Highway 26.
And you're outside of the urban growth boundary and outside of a city?
I'm very sure we are, yes.
Yeah, and so the discharge is allowed, but for the possibility of the shooter violating some state statutes concerning the discharge of the firearm in such a way that would affect people and/or property. We have a prohibition in the county on discharge on parklands. We have a noise ordinance, which wouldn't necessarily apply to a single discharge firearm. We have a chronic nuisance ordinance, which wouldn't necessarily apply because it's not unlawful activity. It's lawful in that area. There might be situations where the shooter would violate a criminal law, but that's up to the DA's office and the sheriff's office.
Okay. So I guess we're just kind of stuck with what we got, huh?
Martha?
Yeah, I'd like to address this a little bit because I have a family that target shoots all the time. They use the Public Training Safety Center, and they shoot on our farm, but there's a hillside where they can shoot into the hillside. I do worry about this because it appears as if, because, I'm just saying this because I, I believe in the lawful ownership of firearms. That doesn't bother me.
I do, too. I'm not...
I know, but I'm just saying that for the record because sometimes we can be, can be misconstrued. But it does seem to me this is kind of a serious issue when you have people with homes surrounding it randomly shooting. Are we going to wait till somebody gets hurt? I mean, that's kind of what my fear is, is that they may be lawfully shooting it, but the space isn't there. There's not the space that my family has. They don't shoot toward, my family doesn't shoot towards Malala River State Park where people are. My family shoots into the hillside at targets or goes to the Public Training Safety Center to target shoot. So I don't know if there's a way to mediate this. I don't know if there's a way to talk to who the shooters are, to talk about safety issues, but I, I'm really worried that somebody there is going to get hurt, you know?
My concern is, if you look, excuse me, if you look at the plot map, it is agricultural area, light agricultural, but if you look at the reality of what there are in houses, it would be just about the same as shooting in any of the residential areas in town, except that we just happen not to be in town. And we have no protection against accidental discharge of firearms. And the person, the shooter number one person, I was out there the other day, and the adult was there, and there were kids shooting these guns. You know, I'm talking about not really young children, tween pre-teenage and teenage area. And maybe in my mind, so far as a teenager is concerned, they're not quite all there yet. They're really, well, their mind has not been fully developed, really. In reality, that's a medical term.
I had teenagers. It's true. Commissioner Smith?
Well, this concerns me as well. I'm, you know, like all of us here, pro-gun rights, but you know, that doesn't mean you shouldn't be safe. And I think as we go forward with a lot of the gun issues, we really need to promote safety and training. You know, I took a class out at the public safety. It was an eight-hour-long class, and boy, did I learn a lot, and I grew up with guns. And I'm very mindful of my neighbors. I live in the country, and we shoot, but we have a backdrop like Martha. We're very careful about it. We don't shoot at night because I think that is more alarming. And then I hear shots from my neighbors. But in your case, where it's more confined area, are they being safe? Do they have a backdrop? I'm very concerned about this, too. You know, a resolution, I don't know what to do about it. I really don't know what to do, and it's maybe something that our Sheriff's Department can help us on an education effort. But we try. We really try. And I don't know what to do, Master Madcor.
Suggestion? The counselor mentioned that the state sort of has controls over this. Can Clackamas County somehow petition the state to look at the issue that we're talking about? Go that route? Be a long way around the horn, but maybe that could work. How's that sound, counselor?
There's likely tools available that the county could use in imposing an ordinance to impose reasonable time, place, manner restrictions on the discharge of firearms in unincorporated areas of Clackamas County. If the board so desired, we'd be happy to explore those options.
We will look at that. How's that?
That sounds fantastic. On my little letter, like I say, when I drove in, my wife has got an emotional problem. I drove up in the driveway, and it sounded like a .357 Magnum went off. I know about 120 dBs. I'm an airplane mechanic, and I know how to, anyhow, it scared me. This thing went off at like 20 feet from my property line, which was maybe 70 feet from where I was just parked my car.
I'll follow up. Have you talked to your neighbors about this?
My neighbor doesn't like me, put it that way.
Well, you know...
I threatened to go down, and I told my wife, I'll go down and talk to him. She is totally upset. She was fearful that he's going to shoot me.
Yeah. Well, I understand fears, but that's probably, in the light of the whole world, may not be a fear that would come true.
I know that.
And we always recommend that you go talk to your neighbors, and we do have resolution services here at the county, that maybe they would just come in and understand why their behavior is affecting you, and maybe they could modify it a little bit. And at this session, I think that's where we should start, and maybe they could just learn more about gun safety and, and how, yes, it is their right, but I don't believe it's their right to scare people.
Commissioner Savis?
Yeah, I just want to say I read your letter, and you know, whether it's a time, place, or manner, but it seems like if it's recreational use, that, you know, 1:00 AM or 5:00 AM in the morning, as you cite in your letter, is not, you know, very neighborly. So that might be something that, if it's for recreational purposes, you know, I, maybe, maybe that time of day could be a factor. I mean, if they have a reason to fire at 1:00 AM or 5:00 AM in self-defense or some kind of an animal, then that's understandable. But at that, at those hours, I would be kind of disturbing.
I'd be a little worried about...
Now, the 1:00 AM incident, the neighbor to my north yelled and says, "Stop that." The result from Shooter Number One was, "Be quiet and go to bed."
All right. Thank you, sir.
That's the kind of person we're dealing with.
We will work on this. I'm not going to say it's right now because factually, one of the things that we've experienced is, is a deep lack of experienced planners right now because we have them on a whole bunch of other things. Frankly, our docket's full here for months, but I will promise you that we will look at this and the possibilities, not only statewide, but also especially here in the county, to establish some possibly reasonable rules about discharging firearms. Okay?
I'm through.
Thank you for coming in today.
Thank you very, very much. Appreciate your concern.
Thank you for coming. You bet.
All right. We do have a public hearing here today. Mr. Crepp, tell us about that.
Yes, we do, Mr. Chair, and this is to consider a resolution that would refer a ballot measure to renew the current county sheriff's public safety local option levy to the county clerk for publication and placement on the November 8th, 2016 ballot. We have Sheriff Craig Roberts and County Council Steve Madcor to talk about this.
Good morning, Commissioners. Stephen Madcor. Joining me is Sheriff Craig Roberts. There's also Under Sheriff Matt Ellington. And we're before the Commissioners today to refer to the clerk's office, eventually to the voters, for the third time, the sheriff's local option levy. This is the first step. You have a resolution before you which would refer it to the clerk, and the clerk would publish it. And there's a seven-day time period, and if somebody wanted to challenge the ballot title, that's what initiates it. It eventually will find its way onto the November 8th ballot for voter approval. And what the voter approval would do would have...
And what the voter approval would do would have a continuation of the 84 jail beds and the 30 corrections deputies over at the jail. And it would be a continuation, a renewal, of the 18 sheriff's patrol deputies and nine detectives, which are currently on the sheriff's staff. And it would also allow those funds to be used for the sheriff to, for drug enforcement and child abuse and child neglect and identity theft issues. It raises approximately $11 million a year. It is a 24.8 cent levy per thousand. And this is, this would be the third time, and it's good for a period of five years, so it would go until 2022. It would kick in in 2017. And this initially was adopted by the voters in 2006, renewed in 2011, and in 2017, hopefully it'd be the third time. And then anything else the sheriff might want to offer to that?
Yeah, first of all, good afternoon, Commissioners, and thanks for the opportunity to talk with you this morning. And one of the things I just wanted to really reiterate is, as we have been doing community outreach to kind of see where the public's perception is and view as far as renewal or an increase. And as many of you know, we're recovering from really some pretty tough economic times. And we're still working on recovery, I would say. And I think that as we've both talked with citizens in our community and conducted polling, it was really, there was wonderful support for renewal. One of the things that we did see the numbers as we did this polling drop when we started talking about additional funding. And one of the things that really as a result of that, we've had a lot of hard discussions. I know with a lot of the Commissioners independently, seeking your advice and opinion and many others. And with that being said, we really see that a straight renewal is really being very frugal with our dollars that we're using and really good step forward. I was going to turn to UnderSheriff Matt Ellington for any comments on the polling. He's been working on that. Matt?
Yeah, good morning, Commissioners. Just a couple of highlights. I think we're very proud to say that when they polled the satisfaction that the citizens have with the services that we provide to the citizens of Clackamas County, it was over 70% favorable. So we're proud to say that. And just briefly, polling for just a straight renewal pulled up in the 63, 67%. So we're confident that we can get this renewed and that's the direction we'd like to head.
Tell us about what would be lost if this wasn't renewed, specifically the amount of officers, services, et cetera.
Good question. So as far as the number of deputies go, there's a couple non-sworn thrown in there. But it's 59 positions that the levy supports. It keeps open 84 jail beds. It funds our, I'm sorry, the Drug Task Force, inter-agency Drug Task Force. That's probably up to about 14 people counting outside agencies such as FBI, local law enforcement. So those things would have to be shut down. I mean, there'd be people that would lose their jobs if this does not get renewed.
And I think just to, if I could just comment on really the success of that task force. I think it's also really important to look at the outcomes. And the Drug Task Force was actually just regionally recognized for the tremendous amount of work they've done on lynn bias deaths. I mean, we're really one of the few in the country that is, is working when somebody dies of an overdose, a lynn bias case, that federally it gives us ability to go after those individuals that sold drugs to that individual that caused their death. And unfortunately, we've had a lot of deaths from heroin. And we feel like that this is really a priority, really to keep our community safe, to focus on those. As a result, they've been able to impact drug trafficking organizations all the way to Mexico. And has really, the task force has been recognized really for their phenomenal work. And it wouldn't be without the tremendous support from our citizens that we'd even be able to do that. And also kind of follow up with, UnderSheriff Ellington, is that if the levy did not pass, we would close those jail beds. And I think that was probably the most terrifying thing for me is we would open our doors and let a tremendous amount, not only the 84 beds that we have, but our forced releases and other, really what I would consider high-risk offenders, would be returned to the community. And so I think that we have done a good job with those 84 jail beds. We've actually been able to open additional jail beds without asking for additional resources, trying to be as frugal as we can with those dollars. And so it has, from, I think, the citizens' perspective and ours, is we've been really good at the use of those dollars.
Commissioner Bernard?
I, of course, support going out and, you know, not asking for a greater amount, even though we are, you know, we are in great need of a higher amount. Can you talk a little bit about where you are short and how, you know, something we can work on in the future? You know, tax revenue to increase the number of beds, for example, the mental health beds, and also some of our patrol personnel? And the fact that, you know, your training costs must be going up a lot since you have so much turnover. I mean, turnover, people retiring and you having to fill those positions. What would it really take? And I'm not suggesting you ask this. What would it really take to get you up to the level you feel you would need to get to, to really, I don't want to say outstanding job because you already do an outstanding job, to get to where you would be in a stable environment and continue to provide outstanding service to the citizens of Clackamas County? I mean, what figures like did you look at? 24 cents more, 10 cents more, 5 cents more?
Yeah, and I can have Matt talk a little bit about the increased levels that we looked at the polling. I think that, kind of getting back to your question about, you know, how many more staff? First of all, I'd say that is a difficult question and we've, there's several positions. I would be here to say, I would advocate for more detectives working internet crimes. It is a tremendous need that is really, we're holding our own. I want to tell you, we're one of the only agencies in the entire state that works internet crimes against kids. The FBI works it. Most of those task forces across the state were shut down during this economic downturn. We have very limited resources in that. As you know, children has always been a priority of mine and rescuing children in those areas is critical. With the funding, with the levy, resources go to help combat that issue. I will say, I want to comment on the Family Justice Center for a moment. And my compliments to each and every one of you for helping move this Family Justice Center forward. I can't say how thankful I am to each and every one of you that that creation of the Family Justice Center, I truly believe is saving lives. And the people that continue to come back to that Family Justice Center to seek resources is really a testament that it is working. And I would be, one of my priorities would be additional staff at that facility, I think. But we really recognize that we're all under tight constraints. We have to operate as efficiently as we can. And I think that kind of gets us back to, at this point in time, really a renewal at this point.
I mean, I just want to add one thing on the Family Justice Center. When you think about how many people go through there, a couple thousand, where did they go before? I mean, the fact that a couple thousand people have gone through that facility and there's probably a few more thousand who haven't, where did they get this service before? I, it's, I think it's just tremendous. And, you know, I know that the Chair and I have a vision for the future to expand those services and along with some of our other partners, finding places for people to get out of the home before it, you know, becomes even more dangerous. I've just got to say that I'm just amazed and wonder where those people went before. And it's obvious that they didn't go anywhere. They didn't get any service until they were to the point where they were literally up against the wall. So I want to, you know, it's a great, it's a great product, great service we provide and staff is doing an outstanding job. And you are the guy who brought it to us, so thank you for that.
Matt, did you want to say something?
You know, one of the things that we are looking at potentially this next legislative session is if there's an appetite for some tax reform, could we get levies not subject to compression, right? It's a limited duration, it's a five-year deal, you know, we're looking at maybe that's the potential because we lose a fair amount of money to compression from this levy. So we're looking at that. We're also looking at maybe, could we make these potentially 10-year levies instead of five? Every five years is, I mean, it's not that long and it costs a lot of money, you know, to get just a renewal done, several hundred thousand dollars. So that's some things that we're looking at, you know, if we could keep this from being compressed, maybe there is enough money there to do additional services.
I don't know how we do that. Commissioner Savis?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, first of all, I'll take the opportunity to say, you know, congratulations on the national award at NACO. We were proud to be part of the people that accept the award in Long Beach. And I thank you for bringing that to me in 2011. I think it serves as an example of some of the innovation that you've brought forward to the sheriff's department. And I agree, just a lot of outstanding programs. And I think Jim's question, if, and maybe I missed it, but if you did, I think his question about how many more cents would it be to get where you wanted to go, and maybe you're not prepared to answer that. But I've, as you know, in our conversation a couple of times, I've expressed interest in what would it take to get us there? Because relying on the general fund alone for any future increases or increases in service or staffing, you know, we're just, you know, empty pockets. I'd be standing up here and pulling my empty pockets out. We're just running out of resources and I know you're aware of that. And, you know, going back to in 2011, you know, when I first came on the commission and I appreciate sitting down and working with the sheriff's department and going over budgetary numbers. We were in a very difficult financial time when that happened. And I'm sorry I missed the work session here a week or so ago in my trip. But I would like to see frankly, an increase for that amount so we don't tap on the general fund. And I really wondered if November is really the best time. And I think probably the majority of, when ACT today, we're probably going to support the levy on November ballot. But I would prefer to see it in May for the extra little ask. Maybe a penny or two would all be required, my guess would be, to reach that 1 million or 1.5 dollar mark for that, for filling those remaining jail beds. I think that's really important. And I've heard from your deputies and yourself and staff how important that need is. And I think as long as the citizens know they're getting something for an extra little ask and we define what that is, I think improves our odds of passing that. So that's what I would like to see. You know, in 2011, you were short on staff. I know what we were talking about, trying to reduce overtime, reduce traffic fatalities and so forth. And I might have a personal bend on this. I lost my brother and my dad and my mom in separate car accidents. And, you know, one of those was specifically, two of my family members specifically from a drunk driving situation. So I have a personal concern about that. And when I was at NACO, one of the other things I learned, and I'll give you a copy of that map, that, you know, the Pacific Northwest is way up in traffic fatalities over the rest of the nation and Oregon's even higher than the state of Washington. So I'd like to see us address that. And I know that's a core concern of mine. I think probably, maybe that's a personal thing from my own loss. But Clackamas County, I think we could do, and maybe that's a means of actually promoting that, is try to take another stab at reducing, reducing that number. We're going the wrong direction in the state. And I'd like to see us change that. But I have some numbers. I'm, I had you, you know, I talked yesterday on the phone. I'm happy to share some of that, some of that. I don't have all the data, but I'll share what I have with you today.
Fantastic. Commissioner Schrader?
One of the other things that we talked about at NACO was sex trafficking. And we had some leaders in the nation talking about what that meant and how to prevent it. And it's one of the reasons why I think your internet pornography program, quite frankly, is so important. I'm assuming there's a connection between the two. Could you tell us a little bit about that?
Sure. And once again, this is, I have to tell you that working human trafficking is, is one of those things where you want to bring together wraparound services, much like the Family Justice Center. Because to get women and children, and I am talking oftentimes the age of 14 years of age are involved in this industry, is that you need to make sure you have these wraparound services. I've talked to Casey Gwynn, who many of you know, and asked what he's seeing around the country. He's actually told me that they're moving this human trafficking element into the Family Justice Centers. And where we are at is, Captain Kevin Poppin has been bringing in a variety of trainers to train our staff. It is, they're actually complex cases to work. They take a tremendous amount of resources. And once again, this is something that we're trying to have folks do on a collateral duty. But with the great partnership of Juvenile, Rich Swift with H3S, that we were all able to come together to fund an advocate that can work with these women in these particular areas that to help them get out of that trafficking field. Because that's probably one of the key elements is have somebody that can work with them. It doesn't do us any good if we arrest them, take them to jail, and we don't have those services for the unfortunate young women working in that field, that we're not there to support them because it is very difficult. So we're looking at how can that actually roll into the Family Justice Center and making sure that we have that advocate. We do have a long ways to go. And once again, it's one of those internet-related crimes that is all orchestrated really via the net.
Commissioner Bernard?
So one of the questions was, what are the amounts you asked for? I mean, you polled. And the other is a comment about what's next, but go ahead.
Yeah, so we didn't poll specific amounts. What we polled was what resonated with the voters, right? What was important to them? Are they worried about property crimes? Are they worried about drug crimes? And so we can tell you what resonates with voters. But with respect to the unopened jail beds, I think Commissioner Savis is right. It's, you know, probably a cent, cent and a half that would get us the revenue to open those up. But when we realized that, you know, an increase wasn't, didn't poll as high, and then knowing what's coming in November with all the other money measures that will be out there, we didn't spend a whole lot of time talking about, like, how many more detectives would we like to have to address, you know, human trafficking or property crimes? To come up with a, you know, an actual plan on a renewal and here's what we would do with it and here's exactly how much of a cost. Once we realized that, not only did the campaign experts say, "Don't try an increase in November," and the polling didn't come back, we didn't spend a whole lot of time at that.
Okay, so this passes. What prevents us from putting another one on that is 5 cents?
Actually, I had a conversation with counsel about that and...
Well, go ahead. You had a conversation with counsel?
Yeah, and our initial, initially, the take without a whole lot of research was potentially mid-five-year term of this levy, we could go out for another one that if it passes at an increase, this one will go away and we'd start at the new military.
What about a separate one that's just 5 cents?
Could do that, too.
And, I mean, so this one expires in 2018, right?
The one we're in now, 20, the end of this year.
Okay.
A renewal would expire in 2022.
Okay. Oh, so it ends actually in 2017, the current levy. Oh, I thought we had another year and we were just trying to get past that. Okay, so, I mean, there's nothing that prevents us from doing a 5-cent tax and selling the citizens on what that would give us in 2018. But, but then you talk about compression and there's only so much money you can, you can charge. And that 5 cents would actually maybe impact, create more compression on the current one. So that's a challenging situation.
Commissioner Savis?
Yeah, well, I like where Jim's going and I, you only need a penny, penny and a half probably for what we're talking about as far as the jail beds. But if balance, 3 cents or 3 and 1/2 cents would reduce the burden on the general fund, that would be, that would be great.
But just to be clear, we're not going to lose general fund dollars if we pass.
No.
Is that right? Because that's kind of what I want to make sure I'm not hearing, that you said it would ease the burden on the general fund.
An additional, well, if there was another 5-cent, 5-cent ask.
Future burden, yeah, future burden.
It would relieve the burden on the general fund.
Us coming and asking for more.
Yes.
I mean, if there was a 5-cent ask, the delta between 5 cents and a cent and a half, 2 cents, it would be 3 cents. That could potentially relieve the burden on the general fund, yeah.
I just want to be fair about that.
So just going back to the patrol aspect and drunk driving, and as I understand it, you know, you... you know, you arrest someone for drunk driving, let's say it's eight o'clock in the morning and deputy starts his shift at eight o'clock and there's a drunk driver. He's, he's probably going to be wrapped up in that for half a day? Is that about right?
Potentially, depends on if they have to do a blood draw and other more complicated, uh, situations like that, but that, that's entirely possible.
Yeah, so I, I know that that's, um, that affects staffing for your patrol that particular time and, and... But with the advent, and I, I told the sheriff yesterday on the phone, I, I'll try to find the news article on whatever TV channel it was, but before I left a couple of weeks ago, there was an article about an increase in toxic, intoxicated driving and so forth, and that is up 150% in the region, not necessarily Clackamas County, I don't know what the numbers were. Uh, but with the advent of, or this marijuana legalization of marijuana, we're seeing arrests, we're seeing a lot of situations up there, I'm just really concerned, uh, I'm really concerned. I live in the Oak Grove area, I'm on State Highway 99E. I do see the OSP, Oregon State Police, out there from time to time pulling people over and of course, our sheriff deputies. Um, but, uh, I'm just really concerned because there are a lot of accidents, there's a lot of broken glass in the middle of the highway right now, there's been three, apparently three accidents recently. Um, one in Gladstone, one in Oak Grove and, um, or two in Oak Grove. So, these accidents are occurring, I don't know if they're fatalities, but I know the fatality rate in Clackamas is really high right now. So I'd like to see us promote a solution to that.
You know, you talk about innovation and I certainly, I think you know, the very supportive of the Family Justice Center and have since Ann Leininger asked me to be. But, uh, one of the other ones is the Sheriff's, uh, Family Violence and Child Abuse Summit. That's very important and it's, what, how many years, twenty what?
I think we're at fifteen years, about fifteen.
Incredible summit, very, uh, well-attended and I learned a lot at that. I, I gotta say, you know, it's not particularly germane to this conversation, but the sheriff arranged for me to have a ride-along last week. It was my first one, as chair, I've been on a ride-along before. But I, my wife constantly, you know, when I drive, it's not that I drive that fast, but she says that having the hold of the steering wheel is very important because it gives you something to help hold you in place. And so she grabs the chicken bar. Well, I had my first Code Three and I'll tell you what, I had a hold of that chicken bar because it was a wild ride and, uh, it's amazing, amazing like the parting of the Red Sea that once they hear those sirens and see those lights, they do move over. Some of them rather slow, some of them on the wrong side, but they do move over. So, anyway, compliments to that deputy, Tony, for a, a great ride. Um, yes, um, we've talked about and, um, I know your, what your polling says that more is going to put the, the whole thing in jeopardy. But is there anything keeping you from going for that ten years now versus a five? I mean, you don't get to call it a renewal, you get to call it a renewal of the same amount, but it's for a longer period of time, does anything keep you from going ten years now?
Yeah, the law.
Restricted by statute.
By statute.
By statute.
The maximum is five years per statute.
And that's where we've talked to county's legislative folks to say, is this something we could bring up the legislature to, to move it to that ten years? So it's, I know it's something we are talking, uh, with about in Salem.
Five-year levy, okay. Well, gentlemen, I appreciate your report, we're going to open the public hearing now and there is somebody wishes to speak, stick around, someone might have some questions for you. So, I'll open the public hearing and we have a Mr. Les Poole that wishes to speak.
Thank you, Sheriff, he does a great job and I really mean that. There was another accident in Oak Grove yesterday. I was at Baxter's Auto Parts and got out of my car and I looked over and all of a sudden, the minivan took off in the parking lot. The woman thought she had the foot on the brake and of course, sadly, she had the foot to the floor. And she hit the, the divider with, mowed down the rhododendrons, went up in the air, came down, burned the tires, still had her foot on the gas, and hammered a Ford pickup and shoved it probably eight or nine feet into the curb. And I thought how quickly a sunny day can change. And the reason I'm reflecting on it, of course, is who responded? Just, it, it, this is right next door to this, to the, to the Oak Grove, uh, fire station. So, I mean, as always, they were there in minutes. Police officer showed up, um, he, he did a really good job of comforting this woman, she was an older lady and, uh, the, the, the la, her, the woman in the passenger seat, of course, was pretty shaken up. But, uh, it could have been a lot worse. And, and my whole point is that the response that you get in Clackamas County from emergency services is incredible. And I, I've had 911 at my house before, uh, I've, I've been in car accidents, fortunately, none of them were my fault. I've, I've had my neighbor's house on fire at three o'clock in the morning, that really wakes you up quickly. And, and you always see a level of service and community involvement here in Clackamas County that I think i- is better than what I see elsewhere. And, and I, I do support this, it's hard to believe, five years ago, this, this was, this was approved. It just seems like, wasn't that two or three years ago? But I guess that also means it's been five years since the Selwood Bridge vote. Wow. I understand the, the comments and the hope to extend the, the timeframe for, for, from five years to ten. And my, my thought would be that ten might be pushing it, you might get the legislature to go seven. But extending anything out beyond seven years sometimes gets pretty darn tough. And that would require two, uh, two levy elections or, or two votes in fourteen years. So something to think about. The other thing I wanted to say is I, I do appreciate Paul sharing what's happened. Um, I've known Paul a long time and I knew he had lost a family member, but, uh, um, it's pretty difficult sometimes to, to come in here and be a commissioner or come in here on any issue, regardless of what it is, when it's been so close to home and still be objective. It's hard for someone that's had a family member die in a gun accident, sit here and, and be objective. You know, it's hard when those, those police officers have pulled you over for speeding and, and then you're down here supporting them. Fortunately, uh, uh, as I said before, they do a great job. I, I just want to say, let's, let's move forward with this and, uh, let's hold our heads high. Because if we don't, eventually what happens is the local police end up looking for money elsewhere. And I can take you to a whole number of communities where they're so reliant on speed traps and pulling people over that it has an effect on the public's perception of the community. So, let's go ahead and move forward on this and, and as always, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. All right, close the public hearing and ask for motion.
I move we approve the resolution referring to ballot measure renewing the current county sheriff's public safety local option levy to the county clerk for publication and placement on a November eighth, 2016 ballot.
Second. All right, Commissioner Schrader with the motion, Commissioner Savis with the second further discussion on the motion. All right, Mary.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Chair Ledlow?
Aye, passes five zero. Um, but now, I'll ask the clerk to read the consent agenda by title.
Okay, the consent agenda. Under Health, Housing and Human Services, approval of an agency service agreement with Life Works Northwest for assertive community treatment programs and approval of an inter-agency agreement with Clackamas County Children, Youth and Families Division for Alcohol and Drug Prevention Strategies for Family. Um, Elected Officials, approval of previous business meeting minutes. The Department of Employee Services, approval of the Clackamas County Deferred Compensation Plan and the Housing Authority of Clackamas County Deferred Compensation Plan. Under County Council, approval of an intergovernmental agreement between Clackamas County and Multnomah County for a HIPAA compliance specialist. Under Business and Community Services, approval of allocation cer- certification agreement with the Oregon State Marine Board for Maintenance Assistance Program, 2016-2017 funding. And North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Clackamas Community College for Education and Enrichment Services for the Milwaukee Center. And that concludes the consent agenda.
All right, commissioners, you want to remove any of those items from the consent agenda?
No.
All right, and we'll entertain your motion.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Bernard, further discussion? All right, Mary?
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Chair Ledlow?
All right, passes five zero, yes, is the answer. All right, um, the county administrator usually gives us great updates on, on good things that happen, but we had those at the beginning of the meeting this time, so what are you going to tell us now, Mr. Crowe?
Well, you know, first off, I want to give a tip of the hat to deputies in our county sheriff's office. Just a couple of quick stories from last week. Uh, last Sunday, our deputies helped to rescue an elderly man from the middle of some ten feet of heavy blackberry bushes near the city of Milwaukee. This gentleman had been missing for twenty-four hours and they were able to find him and extricate him from, from that situation. They also, uh, they were able to free a small dog that was trapped in a hot car in ninety-degree heat and save that car, the owner, of course, was ticketed for that. So, just thanks to our deputies for doing all the things that they do. Um, we have, uh, great news for our Water Environment Services Department. Our director, Greg Geist, this last week, received the Outstanding Individual in Environmental Leadership Award from the Oregon Association of Clean Water Agencies at its annual conference last week. Greg, uh, was recognized for demonstrating superior leadership uh, by creating a wide variety of positive environmental changes in just over one year on the job there at Water Environment Services. Uh, his inspired work on helping us work towards a solution on the solids handling capacity shortage that we face is one of the examples. Uh, and then he has also, his, his team has launched a landmark pilot project examining the use of parasitic acid disinfection in lieu of chlorine, uh, as part of the treatment process. And, uh, his initiatives in surface water management, along with his implementation of performance Clackamas in the department, were all things that were recognized in, uh, this award for him, so, uh, congratulations Greg on that. And then I, Chair, I hope I'm not going to preempt you on this, but this, this is actually bears repeating, uh, anyway. Uh, I know you received a, uh, an email regarding the great work, uh, from our road crews. Uh, we received a very appreciative email from David N. Darlene. Uh, and they were writing to, uh, say just how much they appreciate the county's great service to residents. They said that on July nineteenth, we called the county and reached a helpful lady in road maintenance. Uh, we had discovered a deep sinkhole along the road near our cabin by rhododendrum. The county crew was out within forty-eight hours to repair and, uh, uh, this was not, uh, actually an emergency priority since the road is lightly traveled, but they really wanted to say that, uh, uh, they wish that the state and federal government would do as efficient and responsive a job as we did. So, wanted to share that, wanted to thank our staff in the road department, also want to thank David and Darlene for sending us that good note.
Yeah, real quick, that was their second note. They, you know, some people write in, some people don't, some people thank, some people don't. But, uh, Dave and Darlene are great people and, uh, I'm glad that they're appreciative of our services, thank you. It's time for commissioners' communication, we'll start with Commissioner Savis.
Great, um, well, I've been, uh, out, um, at the, for a week at the NACO conference in Long Beach, California and was able to bring back a lot of information. And I see that Commissioner Schrader also has, uh, prepared her, um, discussion points for topic for today. So, I won't try not to repeat anything she says, I will want to basically focus on, uh, some of the transportation issues um, that are, you know, in our, uh, in our state opportunities and just looking at the transportation system down in California, uh, which is, um, nationally known for its lanes and, um, its traffic congestion, everything. But I will say, after not being down there for a long time and not driving down there for a long time, um, it was flowing, it was actually flowing most of the time and sometimes rather slow. Um, but, um, uh, it seemed to be, I actually felt safer with, um, adequate-sized, um, lanes, um, that the merging lanes, uh, did, had less disruption to the travel lanes and seemed... And, uh, in the whole time of driving down there, I didn't see any, any wrecks on the freeway whatsoever, freeways down there. And actually moved, actually, a lot more, um, uh, the rate of speed, even in, in the worst times of the day, were moving faster than I-205 moves today. I was struck by that. Uh, one other thing that, uh, I think, um, what, kind of touched on the discussion with the sheriff was about road safety. Uh, the national poll showed that the, um, the North, Pacific Northwest is twenty-five, or twenty percent higher in traffic fatalities. And I asked the question, I don't think we got an answer, um, at that meeting, but, uh, if that was related to marijuana, because the state of Washington legalized marijuana first and Oregon came around recently and it's been legal now for about a year. So, I, uh, don't know what the cause of that is, but we are, uh, not, not in, um, we're not trending like the rest of the nation is and there's some areas that are working towards, driving towards zero or zero deaths. And that's, that's certainly a goal. So I'm hoping that we can, uh, get some more stats on that. I did want to talk about, I did want to ask the county administrator a question first before I actually make my comments, but did we, did Clackamas County do a survey, um, that showed overwhelming support for protecting farmland? There's an article that was released from Metro yesterday at two forty-five. I wonder, did we do a survey that showed that?
Yeah.
It says survey on here, I'm citing, I'm citing the question, it says survey right here. Cat, Clackamas County Survey, did we do a survey that showed that?
Well, I suspect what they're referring to there in that article, and I haven't really read that article just yet, but if they're referring to the open houses that took place, uh, as a part of the, uh, public participation process, the county had what was, uh, an online survey, uh, of, uh, public perspectives and preferences regarding the, uh, proposed actions involving, uh, the three areas, uh, that involve employment lands and rural reserves. Uh, so, and I'm not sure if that specifically refers to that or not, but that's, that, that's what, uh, is currently posted online on the county's website, the, uh, results of those.
It's, it says survey and the, the other thing it says there says the Clackamas County lea- leaders have tabled discussion of changes to the county's fifty-year growth map after a public outreach campaign revealed overwhelming, overwhelming, um, opposition to a key part of the proposal. And I don't know that we necessarily tabled anything, I think we postponed a meeting until perhaps September. I think the chair mentioned on Tuesday that we would have that, what was going to be the August third meeting in September. But, so I want to add that clarification, Clackamas County does not have our own news reporter and our no, own news agency to produce our own news, but I think that, uh, I like to bring that up under issues for maybe sending Metro, uh, or ask for a correction on that if we actually didn't do a survey. Um, but I was a little bit taken aback by that, um, by that article that I read this morning. I will say that, I was gonna, I'm just gonna just say this in light of it, I said it a little bit last night, but I'm going to say it again today. You know, that today, we have the worst traffic congestion in the history of the region. Uh, today, we have, the cost of housing is the highest this region has ever seen, outpacing most of the country. Today, the homeless crisis is the worst it has ever been, uh, in this region. The availability of affordable places to live is the lowest the region has ever seen. It is time to revisit whether smart growth is smart at all. As of now, it is smarting all too many.
Good point.
Those are my comments for today.
And now, we have Commissioner Smith.
Good point, Paul, I agree with you on all the things you talked about today. And, uh, it's worthy for further discussion and study. Last night at the, uh, town hall, we discussed, uh, the marijuana tax, three percent we're putting out and then the fuel tax. And it was moderately attended, uh, it was a, a nice summer night, so I can see why people didn't want to attend. But it makes me wonder about, um, uh, how we're doing our town halls if they're not going to be attended and we go out to the community, why have them? And maybe we should take our evening business meeting on the road instead. Uh, it's just a thought that I'm having. Um, just making a plea to the folks for trying to go out and, um, uh, be in your neighborhoods and finding out what is, um, on your mind, but nobody shows, might not want to do it. Uh, Happy Valley National Night Out was this week and was very well-attended, boy, did they do that right. And, um, a lot of people were in, were there.
I don't know what he said, but...
Oh.
It was on TV too.
Oh. What was on TV, you?
I didn't.
Oh, I don't care. It's so much fun working with everybody here. Uh, yeah, so it was very well-attended, they put out a good message, uh, great barbecue and, uh, I want to thank all the people who participated in that.
That's it?
That's it.
Commissioner Bernard?
Um, so, this week, I was a little late for the work session. So this week, I was a little late for the work session because I was at the Mount Hood Chamber of Commerce meeting. They asked me to come up and talk about the village of Mount Hood and what our intentions were, so we're going to, I've asked that that be put on the list for next week to talk a little bit, and I gave Don the questions that were asked. And we can go through a lot of those. You know, they didn't let me get away with just saying, "We don't know, we don't know." But, you know, I suggested that at some point, we would take applications, we would review those applications, vet those people, and determine whether they would be allowed, would be put on a ballot or not, and then provide them some training. And I think that's the direction we need to go. When that will take place, I think depends on, you know, perhaps whether the current members on the board might resign and open up the entire board for appointment. And that's something that I'd like to see. For planning, by the way, I went to the Street of Dreams. I bought two of those houses. They're huge. However, I heard a lot of compliments about our planning department, our inspections, that they went very well, and they appreciated the hard work that the county had done, and that, and I heard nothing but compliments about the work we had done. And that's not the only place I heard that. I heard that from some other folks, too. Also, of course, we had a town hall last night, and we talked about gas tax, and we talked about marijuana tax. And that, some of those same questions actually came up when I was at the mountains. I started out saying that we're going to have on the ballot three cent, I mean, six cent gas tax and a three percent marijuana tax, and hope that folks would take a look at it and consider supporting those. And so the next person who came up said, "Well, first you start asking us for money, and then we want, we want to, you know, you to answer why the village board is on hiatus." So I thought it was, it was a great discussion, and it, I didn't think it was that negative, you know? Of course, people complain about how Congress isn't working, and I said, "What can I do about that?" But I was invited up by the Mount Hood Chamber, and there's certainly an organization that has their hands in what's going on in the county, in that, in that region, and somebody we should reach to, towards, to perhaps reach out to potential applicants. And I guess, oh, almost forgot the dog.
Betty Lou.
This is Betty Lou. This spirited seven-year-old rat-terrier mix is dreaming of her forever home that will treat her like a special lady that she is. Betty Lou is polite, is polite when meeting new people, especially if they have a doggy snack for her. Her breed is known for being intelligent, alert, lively, and loving. Historically, they were hard-to-work, hard-working farm dogs. Now she just wants to be your little loving pet. Come see her today. For more information about Betty Lou and other adoptable dogs, please contact Clackamas County Dog Services at (503) 655-8628, or visit them on the web at www.clackamas.us/dogs. And thank you, have a great weekend.
Commissioner Schrader?
All right, well, I have had a busy week. I started out attending the Harvest Share at Town Center, and this is an area where we have affordable housing projects. I believe Commissioner Smith went as well, and it's where we, it's actually like a farmer's market for low-income residents, and they actually bring the produce and the fresh food and milk and soups that are in containers directly to residents there where they can line up and get some nutritious food. The other thing that happens is they bring their children, where they actually, through the work of North Clackamas School District, can get nutritious lunches, and they have staff and people there who actually do crafts and activities with the kids. So it's kind of a wonderful thing. I enjoy doing that. I also attended the Governor's Regional Advisory Solutions Meeting this week, and basically that was actually on the same day I went to Harvest Share at Town Center. And the conversation centered around pockets of poverty in our region and about how we get people good jobs. And it's not just about the jobs, it's the location of the jobs, the type of jobs, the education necessary for the jobs, and the location of the jobs, so a labor force can get to those. So we are beginning to explore those topics, as well as our first mission of looking at large economic development projects across the region and working with the state and the agencies in order to make sure those kinds of things happen to create jobs. It's also how to educate people for jobs, because one of the things, which I think is no surprise to everybody, is that income is related to education. And the higher you are up the education ladder, the data shows that the more apt you are to get a job that actually is good-paying and where you can have a reasonably comfortable and good lifestyle, which is what we want for all of our folks. Then I went out to, to visit Tammy Marquez Olton, who is a member of our Economic Development Commission. She's also the Director of the Small Business Development Center Training Centers for Portland Community College, and their specialty is looking at international trade. And of course, the reason I'm interested in this is that we have opened up trade to China, we continue to do so, and they actually offer professional certificate courses for folks who want to get the knowledge they need to get their businesses medium-sized and up to start becoming part of a global export economy. And it's easier than people think it is, so I've got a great book dealing with that, but I'm still reading my book on setting utility prices for public utilities, so, you know? If I am interested in it, I always get a book about it. Basically, I'd like to talk very briefly about the National Association of Counties, because I'd like to say what the mission is, which aligns with our mission. NACO works to preserve local decision-making and protect counties from unfunded mandates and preemption of local authority, because stronger counties mean a stronger America. And the 2016 legislative priorities of the National Association, I am very glad to say, are absolutely in total alignment with what our legislative priorities are, both the local and the state level. One is to protect, let me go through it quickly without an explanation, but just give people a snapshot, protecting municipal bonds, support marketplace fairness, protect Medicaid, promote county priorities in surface transportation and implementation, support payment in lieu of taxes, and secure rural schools. Those are for our counties that have large amounts of land and under federal auspice and ownership, and that's replacing what we don't get back in, in local taxes in order to do the work we are mandated to do. Achieve mental health and criminal justice reform, preserve county interests in waters of the U.S. regulations. That's because all counties, including ours, a good seventy percent, actually, I should say, invest in storm sewer systems, sewage disposal, solid waste management, and water utilities, and we invest over eighteen billion dollars in sanitary storm sewer systems and sewage disposal treatment and water supply systems. We are one of the key areas, and even here in our own county, as the purveyors of pretty much making sure that if it's slushed, it's clean where it's supposed to go, so we are not contaminating our water supplies. And as we know, you've seen today, that Water and Environment Services has gotten national as well as local awards for that. So I'll be brief with that, but now I'll go to the arts and culture activities in the county.
Okay.
Art in the Dark by the Light of a Different Moon. AWOL Dance Collective presents this fantastical illuminated, full-length evening production, set in a unique and rare outdoor theater-style setting, suspended in trees, surrounded by beauty and illustrated, illuminated by the stars. Get your tickets early, many shows sell out. Sunday, August fifth, August five through seven, seven thirty P.M. at Mary's S. Young Park in West Lynn. It sounds like Much Ado About Nothing, kind of was, people are running around in the forest. Sounds like a Shakespeare play, actually, like it would be fun to go to. And Happy Valley's Pickathon. A diverse trend-setting lineup unfolds across six unique performances, venues that feed more like, feel more like alternate reality musical rides and stages. Pickathon makes a range of choices that sets it apart from today's mainstream festival culture, purposely maintaining a low crowd density, enabling families to thrive in the finest food and drink purveyors in Oregon. Camping is available Thursday, August fourth, noon to eight P.M., and Friday, Sunday, August fifth, seven to nine, five through seven, nine A.M. to eleven P.M. at Pendarvis Farm in Happy Valley. And for more information about any event, you can go to the Arts Alliance website, clackamasartsalliance.org.
Thank you. The, I spoke at the Street of Dreams event last Friday. Most of the Commissioners have gone up there. Jim said it's some fantastic houses. Probably the most unusual feature is, told me to go in this particular hall pathway. As I entered and approached the water closet, it opened for me and presented itself, and I didn't do anything. I simply backed off, and it closed. So that was probably one of the most unusual features, plus the, the outdoor staging area, you know, outside the house, covered, and TVs that pop out of the ceiling, and, you know, full kitchens. It was quite, quite some amazing houses up there. I had basically located on Billy Goat Acres, though, to climb up to get to these perches of these beautiful houses and their fantastic views. The, the town hall last night went real good. You know, more people showed up than what initially at eight o'clock, they started coming in, not eight o'clock, six o'clock, they started coming in more, and so we were able to get a lot of questions fielded on our two issues. It was themed. They're on the two ballot measures that most people know about. One is the three percent tax on marijuana, and the other is the six cents per gallon fuel tax for the future, for the road ahead, and specifically for this county, for the use on maintenance only. The, next week, we're having the Boring and Dull Day at Boring Station Trailhead on Tuesday, August ninth, starting at five P.M. Some people will be serving ice cream. I volunteered to tie balloons. That'll be fun stuff. There's a Beaver Creek Clinic Pharmacy opening, grand opening, so to speak, on Thursday, August eleventh, at two P.M. And then I have the Fair Board meeting next Thursday. Always good people and great fun, and great pie, always. This week, we, we had some discussions and some redoing of the IGA between the cities and ourselves in regards to distribution of the gas tax funds, should it pass. We had a mental health update, you know, good for Health Housing Human Services. Their drive is, is the same as the deaths on roads to zero. They're trying to get there to be zero suicides. And an interesting statistic said something tantamount to ninety percent of the people that attempt suicide, if they are saved, they never try it again. And so they ask you to ask the bold question, "Are you considering suicide?" I've shared this before with some of you, but the fact of the matter is, my sister committed suicide with a gun. I loved her to death, eleven months difference. She was forty-three years old, had a lot of life to go yet, I thought, but I didn't know the right questions. I was a lot younger and just didn't know the right resources to turn to. But it is preventable, and we should be bold enough to ask, "Are you considering suicide?" And then take the appropriate actions to save that person. We found out that water testing, Wes can do water testing specifically for lead. Now, they're not certified as of yet, so they are going to get certified, but every lead testing organization in the Portland metropolitan area is full right now. And they've actually stopped taking the tests in Portland because of the tremendous influx of children that are being tested. I did ask that Mr. Crupp, since Wes isn't certified yet, I don't really care, but to take, you know, the typical bottled water and send a bottle, I mean, you know, people think, "Oh, I'll drink bottled water." Well, what's in that, you say? So I've asked him to have Wes test, you know, a simple Costco bottle of water and see what's in that puppy, because some of these people seem to think it's a great refuge to drink bottled water. Well, you got to find out what's in that thing, too. I'm sure they have filters, I'm sure they attest to this and that, but these lead, and you know, I'm often concerned about, very rural areas, you know, these old courthouses and old public buildings in the other thirty-five counties, let alone ours, may have similar problems, and I'm glad that it's been brought to the forefront by the Portland Public Schools. Of course, the superintendent basically lost her job over the thing, but it's about time that, that these kind of billings are tested. Mr. Crupp?
I was just going to say, while we're happy to go ahead and test bottled water with our facilities over in Wes, I will personally volunteer to test any of your craft distilled spirits that you may want to have tested first.
Yeah, I got a fresh batch, sure, yeah. The Stafford Landowners Association did a presentation, not dissimilar to what the Hamlet did about the future of the Stafford area. They're at Lagerheads, and that was mentioned again last night, as to the future of the Stafford area. But let's remember that there was a remand by LCDC because of the court appeals ruling, and it said that certain aspects regarding transportation had to be fixed in regard to the Stafford area. Metro says they did that work and sent their findings on to LCDC. We have not done our final decisions on the remand itself. We also entertained this week the idea of a water park at Blue Heron in Oregon City. I think we left the door open for the future for a water park, but basically what we're doing is following the other partners' leads, the real participants in this, and that is Oregon City and Metro. So right now, they're not looking at that, but let's not forget that the owner is very fond of the idea of a water park. Unfortunately, really, a water park is a great idea, but if you look across the nation how they're funded, they're usually by the public. And I'm of the opinion that we're getting up to a fifty-million-dollar sidewalk, a public, paid for by public money, is probably enough along the Willamette River there, and any other money will have to be brought in by developers. Hey, we're going to have a business meeting. Mary's going to put it up on the board here. The fair, the Clackamas County Fair, the best old-fashioned fair in the nation, is opening on the sixteenth. In that, on that morning, we have, we usually participate in the Kitty Capers Parade, where there's been less and less people through the years, but the Kitty Capers Parade. And there's rodeo from Tuesday through Thursday, and it's Kids' Day, excuse me, on opening day, Kids' Day on Tuesday. And I might note that for ten dollars, they give you a fantastic barbecue chicken dinner with coleslaw and buns, and I've had it, it's wonderful, and I attest to it, and it, no, it's not a contributor to my weight gain, or my weight loss, by golly. So anyway, we will have a business meeting at the fair on Thursday, August eighteenth, two thousand sixteen. We actually have a public hearing that day, so that'll be interesting to see if I can gabble down the goats this time that interfere in our important business meeting. So it's ten A.M. If you say at the entrance, "I'm going to the Clackamas County Commissioner Business Meeting," you get in for free before ten A.M. So I bet you got to say that at the entrance, okay? Ladies and gentlemen, there being no further business before the commission this day, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.[1767.61][1767.61][music]